Good morning, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Town of Oakville Council. We're having a special council meeting today and the agenda is by law restricted to the Advisory Committee minutes, to the agenda as published, which is the Advisory Committee Minutes of the Special Heritage Oakville Advisory Committee Meeting of July 26th. And there is also a, I think that's it, Madam Clerk, is that correct? And so, to begin our meeting, I'm going to ask the Clerk to note the members of Council who gave regrets for the meeting.
We have regrets from Counsel Luschina, Hutchins, and Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. And Counsel, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Madam Clerk, there are none. I'm not advised that we have any delegations. Are there any delegations, Madam Clerk? Oh, here we go. Counsel, we have two registered delegations. And the first one is Mr. Robert Visantine from Club Link. Mr. Visantine, if you would like to come to the podium here and share your information with Counsel, you're welcome.
If it's all right with you, Mayor, we'd like to switch the order if it's possible. And I'll go second, and my colleague from Davies Howe goes first.
I'm happy to accommodate you.
Thank you.
So, this is, I believe, Mr. Kyle Gosson?
Yes, that's right.
From Davies Howe?
That's right.
And you're speaking, as Mr. Visantine said, for Club Link. Welcome, we look forward to your information.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Burton, and members of Council. As you noted, my name is Kyle Gosson. I am Counsel for Club Link Corporation, ULC, and Club Link Holdings Limited, the owners of 1313 and 1333 Dorville Drive, commonly referred to as the Glen Abbey Golf Course property. It is only because my client fortuitously learned about this matter yesterday morning that we are even here giving submissions today. Otherwise, Counsel presumably would have been considering and making a decision on this matter pertaining to my client's property without its authorization and without its notice. In any event, as I will explain, Counsel must refuse to consider the heritage permit application before it today. First, by way of background, the application before you seeks to, seeks the remediation of an Enbridge pipeline and the removal of trees on the Glen Abbey property. Despite this, the fact that the application pertains to my client's property, until yesterday morning, Club Link had no knowledge of this application. Not only that, but we also learned through the staff report, that's before you today, that staff conducted a site visit at the Glen Abbey property this Tuesday without notice to Club Link. The town apparently also held a pre-consultation meeting with Enbridge in respect of the application without inviting Club Link or without notifying them. The application before you was submitted on Wednesday without Club Link's authorization and without its knowledge. The town further neglected to inform Club Link of yesterday's Special Heritage Oakville Advisory Committee meeting or of today's special council meeting. It was only by happenstance that my client learned yesterday about these two meetings and about this matter in general. And this brings me to two reasons why Counsel must not consider this application. First, we can see from reviewing the staff report that the town is treating this application as an application made under Section 33 of the Ontario Heritage Act to alter the Glen Abbey property. The Ontario Heritage Act requires that such an application, under Section 33, be submitted by the owner of the property, owner very clearly being the registered owner of the property. However, the application was submitted and signed by a representative of Enbridge as the owner, without the prior knowledge and without authorization from Club Link. Clearly, as the town well knows, Enbridge does not own Glen Abbey. It is shocking that the town would accept and process an application pertaining to a property when it is clear on the face of the application that the property's owner did not make the application and where there is otherwise no written authorization by the owner for the application to be made. Since the application was not made by Club Link, the owner of Glen Abbey, the application is invalid pursuant to the Ontario Heritage Act. The second reason that Counsel must not consider the application is because the application is not even required under the Ontario Heritage Act. Again, the staff report, the staff report is evidently considering and treating this application before you to be one made pursuant to Section 33 of the Ontario Heritage Act to alter the property. Such an application is only required where the proposed alteration is quote "likely to affect the property's heritage attributes." Otherwise, such an application is not needed and Counsel's consent for the alterations are not required. According to the application submitted by Enbridge, which is attached to the staff report, and which of course is prepared without Club Link's knowledge, quote "the proposed alterations will not negatively impact the cultural heritage value or heritage attributes of the Glen Abbey property." Moreover, the staff report incurs, it says on page four, quote "the evaluation of the proposed alterations has identified no negative impacts to the cultural heritage value or interest and heritage attributes of the cultural heritage landscape of the Glen Abbey property." Thus, it's confirmed both by the purported applicant and by town staff that the work proposed by Enbridge has no impact on Glen Abbey, on Glen Abbey's heritage attributes. The staff report goes on to say, "On this basis, staff recommend that this heritage permit application be approved. However, there's no authority under Section 33 for Counsel to approve an application where the proposed alteration does not affect a property's heritage attributes. For this reason, Counsel does not have jurisdiction to even consider this application." For these reasons, Counsel must refuse to consider the application this morning. And notwithstanding these submissions, and just to be clear, Club Link does not object to Enbridge performing the work contemplated in the application. Subject to any questions, that is what I have to say.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It's quite clear, I think. Questions? Thank you very much, sir, for your information.
Thank you.
Mr. Visantine, do you have anything to add?
Actually, I think I might. My first comment's going to be about the minutes from yesterday, from yesterday's meeting. There was quite a debate when we did a deputation yesterday, that I did myself, related to this topic, that we found out about at 10:30 yesterday morning about what was actually being considered at that meeting. And, to be honest, when I saw the application and the way that the application was submitted and accepted by the town, that we had given authority to Enbridge to sign as the owner of the property, I was appalled, absolutely appalled. So now, I come before you today to give you some further background in our knowledge of what Enbridge was doing and that we have an agreement with them, what I call a business interruption and indemnity agreement, where the work that they are going to perform interrupts the play of golf because they were proposing to do it between August 1st and October 1st, so during the golf season rather than during the winter when we're closed. So there was, there was a deal struck to, you know, compensate us for any, what they called rain checks in the agreement, related to that business interruption. The second thing was related to indemnification because we're the owner of the property and the work that they perform may cause environmental damage, various things that may cause the owner grief later, and Enbridge has indemnified us against any of that litigation that might occur after the work is complete. So we're, we're supportive, and we gave our consent to that work being performed, but we did not give our consent to sign documents that they were the owner of the property versus us. And that's our fundamental issue here, is that, that that application is an invalid application. And we concur with both town staff and Enbridge that these alterations, whatever you call them, do not have an impact on the heritage attributes of the property. And so, subject to any questions, I'm, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your information. Are there questions for Mr. Visantine? Thank you, sir. Madam Commissioner, would you like to provide Counsel with any additional information?
We do have a presentation prepared on the permit request that has come in, if Counsel would like to hear that presentation. Sue Shepherd will provide that.
Thank you, Your Worship, and members of Council. I'm going to take you through the details of the heritage permit application, which was submitted by Enbridge, who have an easement agreement with the owners of 1333 Dorval Drive, and also an order from the National Energy Board authorizing changes, subject to several conditions, to undertake the following alterations to the property and its cultural heritage landscape. The remediation of approximately 50 meters of pipeline and its associated infrastructure, both above and below ground, excuse me, from the east and west sides of the 16 Mile Creek, and removal of approximately four to six trees. So the map that you can see here on the screen, I'm not sure if you have a color copy or black and white in your packages, but I'm glad we do have color on the screen. What the different colors in that map just indicate the different pins that are included in the designated cultural heritage landscape. And so, I guess I would just note that that little portion in the middle that looks like a hole actually just is a different color that's being overlaid. So, the entire area of the Glen Abbey Golf Course property is designated as a cultural heritage landscape, and the work that we're talking about here today is actually happening in the upper corner of the property, roughly in the area that I've included in that red box. And so you can see that it includes land not only within the designated cultural heritage landscape, but also on other properties which happen to be owned by Hydro One and also the Town of Oakville. And so, the Line 12 Pipeline, which is what we're talking about the remediation of, runs northeast, southwest, and parallel to the Upper Middle Road, and it originally fed a refinery in Oakville. The pipeline is currently deactivated, it's empty of crude oil, and it's filled with nitrogen. It crosses the 16 Mile Creek at the northeast corner of the Glen Abbey Golf Course property. And so, the circle there is where you can actually see, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, the pipeline as it's exposed in the 16 Mile Creek embankment. The pipeline is installed along the face of the slope, east of the creek, and was constructed in a relatively shallow trench that was excavated into the natural slope and was initially covered or protected by a series of stacked cemented bags, called cushions, that were placed parallel to the face of the slope. The cushions were in turn supported by concrete buttress structure constructed at the toe of the slope adjacent to the 16 Mile Creek. The concrete buttress has failed, likely due to the erosion of the shale bedrock below and behind the buttress. As a result of the buttress failure, a large number of the cemented bags have fallen down the slope, exposing, exposing some portions of the pipe. And so, the, the photos that you can see here were actually taken from the Smith-Triller Viaduct, which is where we conducted our site visit, because it's one of the best vantage points to actually see, see the exposed pipe and the impact on the creek system. And so you can see this quite clearly from walking along the Smith-Triller Viaduct. You may have even seen it kind of quickly in passing as you're driving past as well. The scope of work, I've just cut and pasted this, sorry for the quality of text, but it is included in Appendix B of your, of the agenda package from the Heritage Oakville Advisory Committee. And this is the scope of work that's been provided by Enbridge, and it applies not only to the designated cultural heritage landscape property, but also to the Hydro One property and also to town property as well. So the proposed pipeline remediation includes the following activities. Work area access and preparation, removal of 27 trees from the work area, 19 trees on the west side of the creek from the Glen Abbey Golf Course land, and eight municipal-owned trees from the east side of the creek. We'd note that we've done further examination of exactly which trees are coming down on which property, and I'll give you a little bit more information on that in a second because the number of trees that's coming down on the designated cultural heritage landscape is actually in the range of four to six trees. All necessary tree removal permits have been submitted to the Town of Oakville, and Enbridge and town staff will be working together to coordinate the replacement of removed trees once maintenance work is complete or other situations. The scope of work also includes the complete removal of the cemented pillowbags, the concrete buttress at the toe of the creek, the pipeline from just below the creek bed on the west side, across the creek, up the slope, and continuing from the upper end of the cemented pillowbags to the east side of the pedestrian trail at the top of the slope. Reconstruction of surface water drainage system, remediation of the slope to stabilize the rock formation and prevent further collapse of rock into the creek, and removal of two above-ground gate valves. The scope also includes site cleanup and replanting of trees and vegetation. So as I mentioned, these remediations, the remediation works will be completed on three different properties, and only a portion of the work will be taking place on the designated cultural heritage landscape. And now we'll talk a little bit more about those trees. So the exact number of trees will be determined once Enbridge has access to the property following the completion of the 2018 Canadian Open, so next week. All of the trees identified for potential removal have been identified as approximately 12 inches or less in diameter. A similar amount of trees in similar species may be replanted as required for slope stability. And the additional trees that are going to be removed from the adjacent lands owned by Hydro One and the Town of Oakville have been addressed through the other required processes, through Town of Oakville Forestry and Conservation Halt, for example. So, the map here that's on your screen is again included in Appendix B. This is a rather high-level viewpoint. How far back should I go?
Why don't you back up one sentence?
Sure. So as I was just saying there, the additional trees that are being removed from the adjacent lands are being addressed through other processes as required. And so now I'd like to take you to the mapping so that we can actually show you a little bit more of some of the technical drawings, but also where these proposed tree removals should be happening. And so, the map that you've seen on, that's on the screen right now, is broken into three more close-up detailed drawings, and that's what I'm going to go to next, kind of working our way from west to east. And so, on this section of map, the trees that are to be impacted, or actually are in the, the area, are identified on this map and numbered. Trees with the white boxes are to be retained, and trees that are kind of within a black box are to be removed, or are anticipated to be removed. The other thing I'd like to note on this map is that it does contain a couple of lines that are relatively important for us to consider. And so, the, the greenish line that's in the bottom third of the screen, that denotes where the Enbridge easement corridor begins, and it's the area in the kind of crosswise hatch marks, that is the easement, the Enbridge easement corridor on the designated cultural heritage landscape. Property above that is owned by Hydro One, you can see it's noted in the corner of the screen there as Ontario Hydrolands. And then as we get into a couple of the other maps, there is town property even above that too. And so what we're mainly concerned at looking is the impacts in the area that is below the green line and within those diagonal hatch marks. And so on this slide, there are no trees being removed on the designated cultural heritage landscape. This is the middle map from that original section. Again, we have the green line coming across the screen to show you where the Enbridge easement and the designated cultural heritage landscape start, and the red circle indicates the one tree on this section of the map that is proposed to be removed as part of the pipeline remediation. There are no other trees within the easement corridor that appear to be impacted in this section of the map. So this portion of the map takes us right to the 16 Mile Creek, and that will be continued onto our next map, as you can see there. The, the 16 Mile Creek is located kind of at the, the west side of the property, or side of the screen. And within the red circle are the trees that are to be impacted on the designated cultural heritage landscape. And so there are five trees there that we have noted. The numbers of those trees are 401, 413, 414, 415, and 416. And the other trees to be removed fall on the Ontario Hydro land in this particular As the property is subject to a cultural heritage landscape conservation plan for, for the Glen Abbey Golf Course, we are required, when we are assessing proposed alterations to the property that are likely to impact the heritage attributes, we are required to complete two checklists. They are found in Schedule 7 and Schedule 8 of the conservation plan itself. The checklists have been included, as I believe Appendix D, to the Heritage Oakville Staff Report for the permit application. So you can see how those checklists have been completed. Essentially, I'll take you quickly through both of those checklists. The first checklist is called the Guidelines Checklist, and we use that to determine whether our proposed alteration is relevant to the guideline in question, and if it is relevant, whether the alteration is consistent with the guideline. So the following guidelines that I'll have on this slide and the next slide were considered to be relevant, and in each case, the alteration was judged consistent. And so, we looked, the Guidelines Checklist also, for those of you who don't have the conservation plan in front of you, it divides the Glen Abbey Golf Course property into five areas, and the, the area that's impacted by these particular works is referenced as the Valley Lands. And so, we've also included the guidelines for the whole landscape, which talk about retaining vegetation and tree screening to separate the landscape from its neighboring surroundings, retaining the existing rule of trees and water features in both their aesthetic and golf-related functions, and introducing new vegetation to ensure that the heritage value of the cultural heritage landscape is preserved. In regards to Area 2, the Valley Lands, the guidelines that were considered relevant were retaining the valley character framed by steep planted escarpments, the meandering river, and contrasting manicured fairways, stabilizing the existing designed meandering alignment of the river course, such as by retaining the naturalistic edges, and adding features and structures that are subordinate to and retain the character of the valley and apply the principles of picturesque design. For clarification, we are not talking about adding structures, what we're talking about is features, and by this we mean the potential adding of trees that are being replaced as a result of the remediation. The second checklist is called the Values Checklist, and we have considered, we've completed that checklist and considered the following guideline to be relevant. These guidelines ask us to, oh, sorry, the Values Checklist asks us to look at the heritage values of the property, how they tie back to the heritage attributes of the property, and then to determine if the proposed impact has a positive impact, a negative impact, or no impact. As staff completed this, the review of this checklist, we determined that the vast majority, the, the response for the vast majority of these questions was that there was no impact at all. But there was one, one value that we did find was relevant, and that was Glen Abbey is a landmark within the Town of Oakville, and the attribute that's related is the key views that represent the design cultural heritage landscape as experienced from the public realm and within the course, specifically the visual overview from the Smith-Triller Viaduct. And so, we have considered the proposed works to actually have a positive impact on the property overall because it is removing the unsightly exposed pipeline from the creek, which as I've mentioned, you can very clearly see from the Smith-Triller Viaduct. Staff's conclusions, following the evaluation of all of the material that has been provided, is that the proposed alterations do not have any negative impact to the cultural heritage value or interest and heritage attributes of the cultural heritage landscape of the Glen Abbey property. And on that basis, staff recommend that this heritage permit application be approved. Our recommendation is before you today, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have about the application.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Questions? Counsel O'Meara?
Thank you. Can you just clarify the whole Enbridge putting this application forward rather than Club Link putting the application forward? I'm, I'm, I know that delegates mentioned that, and it might be a question for our solicitor, but I'm just a little confused over, over that aspect.
Thank you. I will defer that question to either the solicitor or the, or the Commissioner.
Any other questions for Ms. Shepherd? Counsel Elder, do you have a question?
My question is going to be exact for Section 33.
So, any questions for Ms. Shepherd? Ms. Shepherd, thank you very much for your presentation. Mr. Solicitor, would you like to provide the public and Counsel with information on ownership and easements?
Chair, Chair, Members, Counsel, according to some detail that I would suggest that you might even see, this is, especially in light of appearance by legal counsel. But I can't, excuse me, I can't hear that point, and this is one of our priorities. Do you want the mic to be turned off? Okay, would you like it turned off? Just one more. I have now turned on the microphone. Mr. Mayor and members of Counsel, in terms of a detailed discussion of this matter in light of legal counsel having come forward and indicated their situation, if there's to be a detailed discussion of this matter, I would suggest it would, it would be best be held in camera, in, in, in case there is litigation arising out of this. I can, can say that the, we have an application, and normally, the normal practice is when an application comes in to the town and it's put forward by, by a party, we normally don't question the integrity or the, of, of a party putting it forward, in this case, a very sophisticated company, being Enbridge. But knowing that Club Link was the owner, we did do due diligence in terms of this matter, and, and because of the ongoing unfortunate dispute by Enbridge, by Club Link of the conservation plan, and so we, and the designation, we did do, one, what authority did Enbridge have with respect to this matter? Title searches were done, and easement is in place for the lands that are the subject of this application with respect to the matter, and it clearly sets out in the easement that the pipeline, the pipeline responsibility is totally that of Enbridge, they have the authority to put it in, they have the authority to maintain it, and, and indeed have an obligation under that document to do so. Secondly, in terms of what this was about, the second element of due diligence is Secondly, in terms of what this was about, the second element of due diligence is there was, was there a requirement to do this work on Enbridge? And yes, there is a National Energy Board order that this work be done. And so, and you see that as part of the package. It was an order that this be done, and indeed, the order was issued in July of last year, but they were late in terms of the approvals that were necessary, and they were not able to meet the fish window, which is August, September of this, of this year, in order to properly do the work in an environmentally acceptable fashion. So we, we had an order from the, there was an order from the National Energy Board. Third, in terms of due diligence, we asked Enbridge whether Clublink knew about this project and whether they had given their consent, and we were informed, and that, and have a statement, that they, Clublink was fully knowledgeable of the work that was being undertaken, and indeed, I think that was confirmed by the legal counsel this morning, that they fully understood what the work was and what you have seen this morning, and that they had consented to that work being done. We also asked, are you authorized, do you have the authorization necessary to present, to make this application? And the answer, again, from Enbridge is we have the authorization to make application for this, as for, as for any other permits that are required, but specifically with respect to this. Knowing that this matter was a matter of urgency in the sense that they are looking to get started with this work next week, we thought that because of the consent and because of the authorization, that the application should be processed, and then it was processed in the normal fashion, going to the Heritage Advisory Committee and then on to council. So in the case of council, we believe the town has an application, it's sitting in front of council, it has, it has been made by Enbridge. Any other issues related to this matter are matters for Enbridge and Clublink to address in terms, between themselves. But, so clearly, we believe that what is in front of council is there in an appropriate fashion. Thank you very much for that information. I think it's important for the public to have a basic understanding of the situation. Counselor O'Meara?
Thank you. So just a couple of follow-up questions. So Enbridge knew that this work needed to be done as of last year when the NEB ordered them to do it? Is that correct?
The, in fact, Enbridge has been working through this process since 2015. It was finally approved by the National Energy Board in the, in July of 2017.
So I'm trying to get at, you know, where the, the last minute, all of a sudden rush to have the council decision has come from, or why, why Enbridge has seemed to sort of lay this at us at the very last minute here. I'm wondering, you know, if they've had all year to bring forward an application, I'm curious as to, you know, it seems it's caught a lot of people off guard, this council, obviously Clublink. I'm wondering what, how that came to pass.
Enbridge has known that they needed to do this work for quite some time. In fact, they were ready to do it last year, but they had some issues to sort out with the various approvals that they needed, for example, M and R at that point in time. So the work was delayed until this year. There is, I think, as the solicitors indicated, there's a fish window for the work to be done. It's from July 1st into September 15th. There is the Canadian Open that's running at this point in time, so the work had to occur after that point in time, and there's a time period to get the work done. So as of, as late as June, July, we understood the details of the work that was being undertaken and knew at that point in time that there was an application required, and so that application was filed. And in order to be able to meet Enbridge's timeframe, we brought this forward on an urgent matter so that council could deal with it, allowing Enbridge to then be able to do the work within that fish window timeframe.
Counselor Chisholm?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Mr. Perlin, for your information. Going back to your comments, fully knowledgeable, and it was consent from Clublink. Was the negotiations or the discussions with Enbridge, is there documentation with respect to that with Enbridge on record?
We do have questions that were posed and answered by, by, by Enbridge. Thank you, Mr. Perlin. Any other questions, counsel? Counselor Elder?
Mayor Burton, I'd like to move, we move in camera for client solicitor information, which was mentioned earlier by our legal staff.
Counselor Elder moves that council retire into a session closed to the public for the purposes of receiving information subject to solicitor client privilege and the communications necessary for that under our procedure bylaw and the municipal act, sections which will be noted in a minutes by the clerk. Is there a seconder for this motion? Counselor Knoll. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Council will now retire to the council boardroom. We don't expect to be in camera long, and so I, I hope that the public will be comfortable in our absence, and, and I look forward to resuming our public meeting. Counselor Duddick?
Your Worship, I wonder if we have some blue paper which is deemed confidential?
Counselor, I'm counting on all of you to bring your papers with you, but the clerks will be here protecting.[1005.62]
I'm going to call to order a resumption of the public session of this special meeting of the council of the Town of Oakville. Counsel, do you have any further questions for staff, for any additional information that you need than what you have received so far? Counsel, if you don't need further information, it's time to make a decision. Is there a motion? Counselor Knoll.
I'll move the staff recommendation, your worship.
Thank you. Is there a secondar? Counselor Chisholm. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Thank you, counsel. This leaves us now needing to, so council has moved and passed the following motion, that the following recommendation pertaining to item 4A of the Heritage Oakville Advisory Committee minutes from its special meeting on July 26th be approved and the remainder of the minutes be received. 4A, heritage permit application, 1333 Dorval Drive, Enbridge Pipeline remediation and tree removals. One, that the heritage permit application as attached in appendix B to the report dated July 25th from Planning Services be approved. And two, that this heritage permit expire two years from the date of final approval by council. It's now time for a mover and secondar for consideration of reading of the bylaws. Is there a motion? Counselor Giddings, and is there a second? Counselor Elgar? And this is for the confirmatory bylaw. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? The confirmatory bylaw is adopted. That completes our agenda and our work together. I want to thank you for your time and attention, and it's been great working with you, and we're adjourned.